Good evening. On behalf of the Janesville Chapter of the League of Women Voters, the Diversity Action Team of Rock County, Forward Janesville and JATV Media, I would like to welcome you to tonight's City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Nancy Sontag and I will be the moderator for this evening's forum. Also joining me is the President of the Janesville Chapter of the League of Women Voters, Linda Reinhardt, who will be serving as the timer for this evening's meeting. This forum is being recorded by JATV for showing later on their Spectrum Cable and YouTube channels and it will also be available through links on the League of Women Voters website. Additional information about candidates for local and state races can also be found on the website vote411.org where questions have been submitted to candidates and their answers can be found. In-person absentee voting for the April election begins on March 23rd and runs Monday through Friday until Friday, April 2nd. The League of Women Voters advocates for informed and active participation in government. We live in a representative democracy that functions best when informed voters go to the polls. All elections are important, but on April 6th, the school board and city council elections will be held. The people elected to fill these positions make decisions that will impact our lives every single day. In the case of the city council, they determine the local taxes that we pay, what roads are repaired, who has a liquor license, who our city manager will be, and many other decisions. I want to thank each of you, the candidates, for your willingness to run. It is a huge time commitment, but also can be very rewarding. The city council candidates are Jack Herndon, Michael Jackson, Doug Markline, Dave Marshick, Heather Miller, and Dan Neal. Our format for the forum this evening will be as follows. We will ask questions of each of you and you will get a chance to answer. You will also get the opportunity to answer each question first, except instead of going in alphabetical order, we are going to start in reverse alphabetical order this evening. Questions have been submitted by our sponsors and members of the League of Women Voters. For each question, you will have one and a half minutes to respond. You will receive a caution at 60 seconds and a stop at 90 seconds. In addition, at the end of the forum, you will each be given two minutes for closing remarks where you can add anything that you feel you have missed or information that would be important to our voters to make their decision. So without further ado, let's begin. And Dan, you will be the first one answering the questions this evening. So what do you believe is the role of the city council and why do you think that you are qualified for this position?
Excellent question. Nancy, thank you for mediating this forum. Yeah, I think the role of city council is to do exactly what you announced in the intro. I think we are the liaisons between the taxpayers and city hall. I think we are to work with the businesses and bring their needs and concerns and wants to city hall and what those votes might be. We are, it is our responsibility to listen. It is our responsibility to vet out and research the questions that are brought to the table. We are on council. We will work collaboratively together to come up with the, with the vote that's gonna, you know, further the city in the direction that we're going. I believe Janesville over the last several years has made great strides in being progressive, being out there at the forefront of some of the issues and, you know, now more than ever, we need a very strong council. We have a lot of work to do with our bounce back from COVID and what that looks like for the businesses, the individuals. And I'm inspired and, you know, excited to be on council and be able to be part of that team and help make those decisions.
Thank you, Dan. Heather, the role and why you are qualified?
We are definitely a liaison between the citizens of our community and the city government. There's a lot of complications that seem overwhelming when it comes to government and it really doesn't have to be, but a lot of people don't know this. A lot of people don't understand the workings. I'm still learning. Everyone is still in that process. But I think it's important to, to understand that not everybody is as technologically advanced as we would think. You know, we have our youth that are, that are growing up in this digital age, but we have a lot of our population that is not. And we have to remember, communication is key. We have to keep them involved because everybody needs to have a voice and we need to listen.
Thank you. Dave?
Great, thanks. Yeah, Dan and Heather both said it. I think, I think the key is listening. You know, the, the city council role is to listen to the community, both business and residents, to make sure that their voices are heard and that we spend the time to, to really dig into the questions that are arisen and the issues that are arisen. And it's our role to, to be very thoughtful about those, those issues and make sure we take the time to understand them and make the right decisions. And they may always not be the most popular decisions, but, but my decisions are gonna be balanced. They're gonna be well thought out and balanced. I think, I think I bring a unique set of skillset to the city council. Professionally, I've worked in banking for almost 30 years. I certainly understand financial statements and budgets, you know, so that, that, I've got a lot of experience in that. I do it just on a daily basis. I've also spent a lot of time in civic and community organizations and have leaded, in, in leadership roles. And so I think that, that helps me understand the role that, that's needed. And in a couple of my roles on the Downtown Janesville bid, as well as the Downtown Janesville Revolving Loan Fund, I've learned a lot about how the city council and city government work. So I've kinda got that background that I think will, will lend to being able to understand. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Doug, what's the role of a council member and why are you qualified?
Well, the role of a council member is to help set policy to guide the city to make decisions in a nonpartisan manner. And as everyone has said so far, we are a bridge from the residents to city hall. We help them on a daily basis. A council member is not somebody that shows up for a couple hours every other Monday night. It's a daily thing. Listening to our constituents and explaining to them how the city is operating, why this is happening, and problem solving, work for them. The skillset that I bring is a home builder. I've been guiding homeowners and homebuyers throughout the process of one of the biggest decisions in their life. Listening, problem solving, thinking outside the box, staying on budget, time and money, balancing needs and wants, working with a team of craftsmen to achieve a common goal. It's what I do every day. It's what I do on the council. I have worked in every neighborhood in Janesville. I know the streets better than a pizza delivery man. I've worked at every income level with owners, landlords, and tenants, with lifelong Janesville residents and also our newest residents. And I'm ready to serve with the time and desire to do it again for another two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Michael, the role and why you're qualified?
I think it's been well and little can I add, listen, engage, set policy. I, I wanna say I'm running simply because I, I really want the job. I don't wanna sound too ambitious, but I believe my life been set for this moment that should the voters decide that I'm the person they want to represent them, one of the four, I want them to understand I'm ready and willing to go to work from day one. My community involvement over the last 21 years, as well as my education, my life skills have set me up, I believe, to succeed on this level. I've been involved in running a business. I was a minister of small churches and then over time became a minister of a large church or large churches. I've been involved in healthcare, co-founder of the Janesville Community Health Center, as well as the Board of Directors for Health Net. I've been involved in partners in prevention, dealing with drug and alcohol issues for our youth. I've been involved, Rock County Behavioral Health Redesign Steering Committee, dealing with mental health issues, caring for the poor, and many other like issues. I believe that were I to be elected, I would listen, I would serve, I would get things done because to me, community matters.
Thank you, Michael. And Jack?
I believe that our position is to listen to our citizens, our voters, our taxpayers, and represent them and help promote business to make the growth necessary to keep Janesville moving forward. Also helping people understand how to get involved in any situations rather than being confused and complain about how things aren't getting done. If they understand better how the system works, they're, they're more likely to get involved and, and make the changes necessary. I've been involved in fundraisers and festival organizations as far as bringing people together and getting things done to raise funds, to help other organizations. And I think that I would be really good at helping people get involved and get things done as far as our city council goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Heather, you will be going first for this next question. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing our city in the next year? And what are the significant challenges the city of Janesville needs to consider as we plan for the future?
I think we have to address the elephant in the room and that's the transportation utility. Our roads need repair, they need, we need to figure out a way on how to do it. I know that there's been a lot of talk, a lot of discussion about a transportation utility. Certainly there needs to be more discussion. I think there are other options. I think that's gonna lead down a whole nother path, quite honestly. Another huge ordeal is the city budget. You know, I, I believe we need to learn to live within our means. I need, we need to decide what our needs are versus our wants. And I know sometimes that's, that's a slippery slope, sometimes it's a very thin line, but we need to decide really how to tighten our, tighten our, our, our tight, our strings. We can't allow our needs to exceed, our wants rather, to exceed our needs. And in this day and age, we're coming out of a pandemic and we need to be mindful of how these businesses are, are looking. They've had a lot on their plates, you know? At the end of the day, we have mental health crises. We have a lot of mental health that we have to keep in, in check. We have kids that are learning to disassociate from their, their peers. We're learning that we have to keep distances. We can't communicate well and we have to-
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
I know it's, there's a lot there to share.
There is.
Easy to talk about. Okay, Dave, you're next. The challenges that we face in the next year and in the future?
Sure. Yeah, the immediate challenge, you know, Heather, Heather hit it on the, on the head. You know, we've gotta figure out this, this streets financing. Right now, the, the, the way that we're going about it with, with financing, the large majority of it through debt is not sustainable in the long term. And so we do need to find another solution to that. And in my, my, I, my thinking is that the solution is a multifaceted approach, right? You know, it, the, the transportation utility came in as a, as an idea and I commend the city council and the city staff for identifying the problem, finding an out-of-the-box idea and bringing it forward. And it just wasn't balanced in my, in my view. So maybe that's a piece of it. And, and we've gotta just look at some diverse, different ways to fund that. There's not one thing that's gonna solve that issue. It's gonna take a coordinated effort and a lot of different approaches. And then long-term, you know, the, always the challenges are, are supporting the businesses, you know, keeping taxes reasonable, but still being able to provide the, the services and amenities that makes Janesville the great city that it is so we can attract new businesses and attract new residents. So that, that's a balance that, that will always be a challenge, no matter what city you live in, is finding that right balance.
Thank you, Dave. Doug, biggest challenges facing us in the near and long term?
I think the biggest challenge facing the city right now is the COVID problem and it's coming to an end and we're gonna get together. But what will be the new normal for citizens, for businesses recovering, for people being comfortable to go out, for people that are not comfortable to go out? It's gonna be a game changer and it's just gonna be a whole new world when we're able to walk around freely. And another challenge that hasn't been mentioned is we're gonna have a new council, at least three new members, and they're all well-qualified. But it still takes a good year to get up to speed. Our budget, needs and wants are important, however, the budget doesn't have very many wants in them anymore. Our revenue stream increases less than the cost of living and so it's gonna be a challenge to maintain our existing services. This council made great strides in getting going on a transportation utility and the new council will have to pick up that task and move forward and do the best they can and try to get it, it solved. The other one, and it's not just Janesville, it's the whole country, mistrust, misinformation. What facts do you choose to understand? What facts do you accept and which facts do you deny? And it just makes it so difficult to govern when, when people are not on the same page factually. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Michael, the most significant challenges in the next year and then beyond that?
Always finances, always and forever finances. Everything seems to flow out of that. I think secondly, looking at the city hall, I see several personnel changes, some that have already taken place, potentially several others that could take place over the next one to two years. Certainly the next council is going to have its hands full dealing with some personnel issues. I think we have to vote for city council people that are ready for that type of challenge, up to selecting leaders that will take our great city forward. I began this campaign around the first of the year and at that time I defined five major planks for my platform. They still remain very much in play today. COVID recovery, we've got to look at the new normal. Secondly, jobs. Third, affordable housing. I'm very much an advocate for support for small businesses. I love and believe in local small businesses and supporting them. I'm a fiscal conservative. I'll live and die as a fiscal conservative. So we come back to the issue of finances, guarding our finances and making sure we live within our means. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jack, your turn to tell us what you believe the challenges are.
I believe that the, the biggest challenge as of right now is the transportation utility being presented and being put into place without a lot of knowledge. I think that there's a better way that we can address this to deal with our, our debt that the city has and our needs as far as road repair and utility repairs and also keeping our infrastructure strong and, and in good repair. Businesses affected by COVID and by the downtown construction for the past few years is a big worry, I think, in a lot of our minds. I think that we could refine the budget a little bit and find some wiggle room to deal with the issues that are needed rather than just the wants as everyone else has spoken of. And our, in the long-term, our debt and strategic plan, I think if we all work together, we can come up with a good plan to make that happen and move forward towards, in the strategic plan as the carbon-free footprint by 2050 is, I believe, the, the target date. And together we can make a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Dan, your turn.
Sure. I believe the biggest challenges align with what has been spoken. I think the COVID relief and how we move past post-COVID is very important, not just for the businesses, but for the individuals. We are, are going to need to take a look at how the taxes are going to affect them, how they're going to affect the businesses. And in realm and in speaking of the taxes, we do have the utility tax that has been talked about for the last couple of months pretty endlessly. City Hall put together a plan. The plan was paused by city council. Commend city council for taking a pause on that. It will be up to, if it goes forward and what continues through this year, how we decide to go about that. Will be incumbent upon this council to come up with that. I definitely believe that that is something we're gonna have to tackle. We all know a giant stimulus package was just released this week in the news. It will be imperative that we have the right people that know how to dig into that and figure out if and what, there is any money for our city that we'll be able to get in, grab and work with. And we're gonna have to get creative, we're gonna have to have the right people looking at it, but we cannot come out of COVID and expect the taxpayers to take the burden. We cannot expect the businesses to take the burden. We're going to have to find ways to get creative and this council that is coming up is gonna be the ones to look through that utility tax and come up with the, with the plan. I think that's the number one thing we face.
Thank you, Dan. Well, you, you all have given me a wonderful segue into the next question. You've already touched on this, but a resident of the city of Janesville would like to know more about your views on the transportation utility. Specifically, do you see it as a utility fee or a mileage-based user fee? Would you consider voter approval on any transportation fee and any other views that you have about it? And Dave, you will go first this time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess we opened that right up for you, didn't we?
You did.
So, you know, the utility fee, again, it's, it was something that was a creative outside-the-box idea and that, that's great. That's the kind of thinking we need. We need to look for creative solutions that maybe aren't the normal. But as I mentioned, I, I don't think it was really well-balanced at all. And to Dan's point, you know, it was really taking that whole burden and putting it on taxpayers. And, you know, whether it's, you know, this time right now is, is the worst, but any, really in any time, to take that whole, whole cost and just plop it right on the taxpayers is a big, big burden. So we've gotta look at some other ways to diversify our, our revenue streams to help cover those costs. It's very important, obviously. Infrastructure is important and we've gotta do 12 miles of road because that's the rotation to get through all 330-some miles we have before we gotta start doing them again because roads last for 20, 25 years. So you've gotta do that many miles, so we gotta figure out a way to, to finance it. I, I can't say whether I'd vote for utility tax right now. As it stood, I would not have supported it. Maybe there's a way that makes it different, that, that makes it palatable, more balanced? I don't know. But gonna be part of, part of, part of our task, that's for sure.
Thank you. Doug?
Ready? So what, what the citizens of Janesville saw in January and February this year is what the council does on a daily basis on every problem that comes in front of us. It's called transparency. You were watching us put a jigsaw puzzle together without knowing what the picture looked like and doing it in public. First, we have to understand the problem. Then we have to look for possible solutions, creative solutions, out-of-the-box solutions, unheard-of solutions. And we have to research and ask the questions on how this will affect our citizens and our small businesses and our big businesses. We have to listen to our community, assembling a Blue Ridge panel. When that's all done, the city council will have the lonely and thankless job of balancing the pros and cons and come into a consensus and then explain that decision to the community. But it'll be done transparently and it won't be instant. If people want an instant answer, completely well-thought-out, they are not gonna find it. They're gonna go along with this ride with us until we come to a consensus. My guess, it'll be a blended solution of a lot of different funding factors coming together. And it'll be fair and equitable. And when it's all done, we need to review. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Michael, tell us what you believe about the transportation utility?
Without a question, something has to be done. As noted, the debt load as it is cannot be sustained. I, I'm a fiscal conservative. I believe in paying my bills. I would feel like I would have to be able to pay the bills were I to be a city council person. Our roads have to be repaired. There's no question about that. Letting them go, especially within our climate, is not an option. I believe that the council did the wise and right thing in hitting the pause button. If I would have been on that council though, I would have taken it one step further. I would have voted no. And with the information that I have today, I would still vote no. $68,000 utility fee for schools. That's what the Gazette said. I don't know, but that's what I read in the newspaper. That's all I was what I read in the newspaper, as someone wisely said. I don't know that that is sustainable. Some of the other things that I look at and have read about the utility fee, not sustainable. So we've gotta go back to the table, come up with more options. I like the idea of a committee, maybe working out some options and then bringing them back to the council in several months, but no fee.
Thank you, Michael. Jack, what are your views about the transportation utility?
The way the transportation was, utility was presented, I don't believe it would work. I think it would push business away from Janesville. We need to promote more business in Janesville that will create more revenue, more tax dollars, more jobs. If we can do that, that will help with the shortcoming of funds for our road repair. As I said before, the budget could be refined, we could get some funding from there. If we show responsibility in our spending, we can find new ways to, to do this. We need to get a committee together and put all ideas on the table and everyone work together, not butting heads and not saying this person's right or wrong, but work together and make it happen. There's, there is a solution. We have to find it without putting it on the taxpayers' backs or a small business. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Dan?
Yeah, the utility tax is something that is outside of the box. I commend city hall for going outside and finding alternative answers to try to find a means to help it paid for. I do know that there were several phases to this. There was different options, seven or eight different options. We chose one option. You know, if elected to city council, I wouldn't expect that we can have a look at what are the other options, what they entail. Let's dig into them, let's find a solution. Although I do agree, we can dig through the budget and try to find things, the nickel-and-dime things, I don't think fine combing our budget is gonna be able to find the millions and millions of dollars that it's gonna require to fix the 12 miles of roads. We need to get out there and figure out what it is. I mentioned the stimulus package that got pushed through this week. We can look through that and see if there is some holes in there for us to find and get into. We have the right people in place to go do that, but I do realistically think that, we're talking, we're talking millions and millions of dollars. We're not talking about thousands of dollars. We are going to have to work together to dig through some of the options if we choose to stick with the utility tax, but it, it is something that, you know, working, you know, hand-in-hand with, with city hall, we're gonna come up with a solution and it does not need to come on the shoulders of our businesses. It needs to come across as, we've done our research, this is how we're gonna fix it and go about it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Heather, now you can probably speak a little bit more about the transportation utility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've been a little bit outspoken uh in regards to this from the beginning. I I have followed it over the months. And what I don't understand and and forgive me for sounding uh a little crass, but how did we get sold on this idea without asking the hard question of how much? How did it get this far? To a point where we just finally ask how much? And then when we are, when we are presented with these options here, it's going to cost you, you know, more than $20,000 to your schools. It's going to cost your nonprofits. It's going to cost all of your businesses. Look at the the mainstream businesses downtown, everyone who suffered through the pandemic, and now we want to turn around and shoulder a a transportation utility? Not only are we going to drive businesses out of town, we're not going to gain new business. I don't understand how we got this far without asking those questions, and it would be a no brainer for me. We need to find another option. I think the most logical option, if we can use some funds with with the stimulus coming, it maybe that would work. But I think quite honestly, I'm not in favor of a tax, a tax increase by any means. But I'll tell you, shouldering a half percent increase in sales tax would help shoulder it a little bit easier.
Thank you, Heather. Doug, are you back with us now?
I am, yeah. I think crash, everybody froze up. Sorry about that.
That's okay. You're back just in time to answer the next question first.
Good.
Which is, what can the city council do to encourage business growth and development in Janesville?
Oh, we've done quite a bit. Um, we've only had a minute and a half, so I better start thinking fast. Basically, for the big businesses coming through, we have a TIF and a TID district setup which allows us to be competitive with other communities in order to attract uh businesses, tax base and jobs uh to the city of Janesville in a fiscally responsible manner. And it's been very successful. This past Monday night, we have approved 281,000 new square foot.
Uh, Doug, I think you froze here.
That's one of the main things that's, oh, come on, don't jump on me now. That's one of our best tools for attracting for our um small businesses in town, for our downtown ones, we had a a plan that I hope I'm being heard. Our um small business loans to help uh besides on Main Downtown. We work with small businesses. If they have problems, they can counsel and we try to solve their problems. I'm working with a hotel right now, trying to figure out how they can uh have a pet policy that they can live with that isn't abused by people just bringing their pets in um at random. So um, there's a lot of things the city can do, but there's a lot of things that we can't do. And we work with Forward Janesville as close as we can uh and get their input when there's a major business decision. Thank you. And I hope I didn't cut out too much here. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Michael, what can the council do to encourage business growth?
Well, you just hit my sweet spot. This is one of the issues again on my plank, by point plank, and it's one of it's very close to my heart. Hard. I've been visiting local businesses during this campaign, going to their actual business, setting down and listening to them. One idea that has come out of those various meetings has been one individual said, we need a quote dedicated planner, a one step development manager, close quote. He felt like there was too much red tape rigmarole between himself and the city, and he would bring that down to one person. I like that idea. If nothing comes out of it, then if I am elected to the council, I'm I will be that one person, not on a salary, but I would want to be an advocate, uh, an honest budgeman for local business. I'm in favor of lessening the permit and regulatory burden on small businesses. Almost every small business that I talk to, business owner, that was an issue they brought up. The only burden of of permits and res- registrations and so forth. I would study that and would bring a committee together to look at the entire process of permits, regulations, and how we can be more friendly, actually the most business friendly city in the state of Wisconsin. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Michael. Jack, what can you as a councilperson do to encourage business growth?
Um, that's a good question. As far as regulating taxes, so there there's not taxes excessively being pushed onto businesses. And as uh previous had said, on the shoulders of the businesses, especially off of a pandemic, make business affordable for people to open a business. There was a thing with a meeting with the city council previously that said for a business to sell liquor or alcohol in their business, they would have to invest $100,000 into their building to uh renovate it. So they had some skin in the game. That that to me is not promoting business, small business. Let's cut that out and just help the people get their businesses going and promote their businesses. Um, I guess that's all I have on that. I wasn't prepared for that question. Thank you.
Well, then I guess it's a good question.
Very good.
Dan, what do you think the council can do to encourage business growth?
Yeah, Nancy, this question is near and dear to me. Um, being a member and ambassador for Forward Janesville, I get a chance to live in this world um weekly, daily, monthly basis. I get to hear the struggles. I get to celebrate the triumphs with the businesses in our community. Um, we have over 500 businesses in this community that have a very strong voice from the one person shop to the big five, 600 people shop. It it doesn't matter. They all show up. They all care. On on city council, what we need to do is, like I said in my opening statement, is be the liaison between them and city hall. A a very good example was, you know, we went out with the utility tax and asked 500 businesses, what's your take on the utility tax? 500 resounding no's. We the city council listened to that. Being on city council, if elected, I will continue to do the same thing. I will have my finger on the pulse of the businesses as I will not be leaving Forward Janesville. Um, in fact, I'm hoping to up my stake in a game with Forward Janesville in the future. And I look forward to continuing the partnership with them, the city and being the the voice for them to city hall. Thanks for the question, Nancy.
Thank you, Dan. Heather, your turn. Encouraging growth, business growth and development.
I think I think we're doing a good job. I think we have the downtown business alliances that are doing a good job. We're bringing businesses to our downtown. We're encouraging businesses to come and and develop within Janesville, and we've made some large strides. I think it's fantastic. Um, I do think at the end of the day, we're lacking when it comes to our youth. Um, we we could use some things more for our youth. And I don't mean just the teenagers. I mean, young people in general, they're they're limited. You know, I I cringe when I have to think outside of our community whenever, you know, we have events, you know, whether it's Madison, Milwaukee or Illinois, you're leaving town to do, you know, some fantastic things that we should bring to our community. I think we need to really focus on them. I think that's where where we would make great strides as well. And it would be complimentary to what they've done already and what exists here.
Thank you. And Dave.
Thank you. Um, congratulations, Doug, and in the city on on that wonderful Monday night news. Um, our economic development team at the city does do a great job. You know, they've they've got a full, a few tools in their toolbox uh that they can work to to attract businesses, and I think they use them very well. They really do. Um, so I, you know, I I talk to businesses every day, every single day. That's that's what my job is. So I know what those needs are. I understand the the challenges they have. Um, you know, there's talk about permits and in in the red tape and all of that. You know, a lot of that is is necessary stuff. So I I think the challenge is is having the city provide the resources in a roadmap to to help them through that process. So especially the small businesses that that, you know, maybe you've got a one person opening a shop and guess what? They're the owner, the cashier, the employee, the CFO, it's all one person. They don't, they don't understand the process. And so to 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 make sure that we make that process understandable, easy and guide them through it, I think that's a role that the city really can help because there is a little bit of a perception out there that that the city is is maybe hard to work with, but but I haven't found that. You know, I've I've worked with some customers through projects and and I found the city has been very helpful and and responsive. So it's really understanding the process and and helping guide through that process.
Thank you, Doug or Dave. I was looking at who goes. Anyway, all right. So the next question, Michael, it will be your turn to answer first. Our efforts and successes to recruit and retain people of color in the city of Janesville have been meager at best. How do you suggest we move forward with these efforts to make city departments better reflect Janesville's population?
I have uh taken great pride in the fact that I have worked closely through the years with people of every color, every stripe. Uh, it's a part of my DNA. Uh, I have reached out to said individuals on a lot of different levels. I think in answer to your question, I I think we have to be open. We have to be welcoming. There ha- not that we put a sign out, but uh it's an attitude that comes from our businesses. It's an attitude that comes from our neighborhoods, from our police department, from our city council, from every facet of our community that we are a community that cares. We're involved. We lift each other up. We have a sense of community because community matters. I want to make sure that Janesville is one of the most diverse and loving communities out there. And you know what? That begins with you. That begins with me. I can't pass it off to someone else. I have to take that burden and responsibility and understand Janesville is as I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jack.
Can you like a- ask the question one more time, please?
I certainly can. It's a long one, so. Our efforts, successes to recruit and retain people of color in the city of Janesville have been meager at best. How do you suggest we move forward with these efforts to make city departments better reflect Janesville's population?
That's kind of a tricky question because it sounds like um they're in the past, they're showing no it it meager at best with people of color in our community. Uh, if I'm understanding that correctly, I I don't think that's a fair a fair game. Everyone should be treated equal. Doesn't matter what their skin color is or their background or anything. Um, I hope I'm not taking that question wrong, but everyone should be treated equal. And be helped along to if they're starting a business or or opening a business or running a business, everyone should be treated equal no matter what the situation is with their color, background, ethnicity, anything like that. Um, that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Dan, what do you think we can do to make city departments more closely reflect our community as far as ethnicity and diversity?
This is an excellent question. Um, we as a city need to defer to our minority population. We need to look at other cities and see what they are doing and see what they are doing well. We need to ask for their insight and their guidance. We must do more. We need to do more than rely on each other. We need to look around and see what we see. It is at no surprise, Janesville in the past has had a reputation of injustice which marginalizes unrepresented groups within our workplace. And it is important for us to understand how that is affecting our ability to attract diverse families to this community. You know, some ideas, and I don't have, I don't have all the ideas, but some ideas, you know, we must audit our recruitment process. We need to offer internships at the city level. We need to cast a wider net at that level. We need an actual pool of diverse candidates, which proactively means we cannot wait for people to apply. We must go out. We must attract and we must recruit those people. Things I look to to help do this would be career fairs at city hall. Um, we need to do job boards, as Michael mentioned, media outlets. Um, we need to look at other communities that have their boots on the ground and are doing the right things, and we need to bring those things into our community and and help the committees that are out there right now further that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Heather, what do you believe that we can do?
I think quite honestly, we're already doing it. Um, you look at the police departments and they are openly recruiting a diverse group of people to provide law enforcement. Um, we have the fire departments that are already doing this. Um, we're going into schools that are predominantly um minority uh run schools and and we're doing that as we speak. We've been doing this. Can we do more? Probably. But I think at at the end of the day, we're still seeing where many people may choose to go a different direction. We're seeing that many people of you uh of a minority may be not, maybe choosing not to work within the city, you know, maybe they're going elsewhere. We don't know. You know, we're a melting pot. And I think quite honestly, we are doing it. We're doing our share. We are opening doors every day. We open them for schools. We open open doors every day to encourage it. I think we are.
Thank you, Heather. Dave, what do you believe can be done to increase the diversity?
You know, so so Heather made the point that that maybe we don't know why we're not, you know, these these minorities are are going elsewhere. Uh, we need to find that out. And what we need to do is we need to seek out the opportunities to to learn and to listen. Um, it's 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 so critical to 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 find out what what people of color and what minorities view as the the issues and and why we can't get them into our 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 workforce and the city staff and things like that. Um, we don't know, but we need to find out. And it's really a personal responsibility thing, right? So so we can all sit here and say, absolutely, I'm I'm all about inclusiveness, but what are you doing about it? You know, just just saying it doesn't do anything. You've got to go out there and do something about it and talk about it and learn and and be comfortable being uncomfortable. You know, it's easy for us to do all the things that are comfortable to us and our socioeconomic status or whatever. But but go and find something that maybe makes you uncomfortable, but you learn from it. And that, I think, is the is the key. And we've got to make this community welcoming to everybody. And we got to understand that if some people don't find us, all that welcoming, why? And what can we do to fix it? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Doug, your turn. What do you believe we can do?
I wish I had the definitive answer, but I don't. But it's not from lack of trying. Um, Dave Moore has spoken at great lengths on the efforts that his department has had to hire people other than white Caucasian men um to the thing. And um, he's he's got groups out that meet on a regular basis. The fire department has done the same. I think um, we want to be a community of choice. We're offering uh welcoming to anyone that would like to come here. I do believe our history of Janesville and Beloit going way back before my time has kind of put a stain on the city, and it's going to be, it's going to take a long time for some people to forget what happened way back in the 50s and and before that. Um, it's not from lack of trying. We can, we're raising a
Doug, are you there?
Open. We need to think on how to go forward on this. Um, that's it.
You were freezing there for a moment.
Oh, I've been freezing. Oh, I've been freezing all night here. I don't know what it is. So basically, the the fine choices is the the city administration is is open arms for everyone that would like to come here. We don't have barriers up. We're trying to be aware, we're trying to be diverse, trying to be welcoming. And people are coming in and when they do, we need to treat them with open arms, treat them with respect, treat them like just another person. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, Jack, you will go first this time. We often focus on the challenges facing the city, but what do you think is going well right now in the city of Janesville?
What I think is going well? This election's going well. There's a lot of people, a lot of positivity in this city, the city employees. I've spoken with people from the fire department and the police department and stuff. They are all very positive about our city moving forward and growing and becoming a better place. I care about our city becoming a better place so my kids and grandkids and their kids can grow here and raise their families as I did. And I think that the positivity outweighs the negativity in our city. We're we're very, a very neighborly city. And I think that the people of Janesville work well together. We solve problems, we help each other out. And I think that this is just another step in that direction to help guide people to do that and teach new people that are moving here that that's what we do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Dan, what do you think is going well?
Thank you for asking this question. Oftentimes, we like to focus on what we could do better, what's going wrong. And even if there's 10 things going on and nine of them are going right and the one is going wrong, we tend to focus on what is going wrong. So I love this question. We need to take time and bring attention to our city's victories. You know, we look at the individuals that when COVID first started, you know, if you walked around your community, it was a beautiful spring. Hundreds of houses put hearts in their window. It was just endearing to see the camaraderie come from that. It was on the news channels. It was very, it was fun to see. It was fun to take my children around and look for some of that. Just that camaraderie of seeing the 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 community come together. And on that, you know, for the businesses, the businesses got creative. You know, we had music at the Marv. Restaurants pivoted to drive up and take out options. And everybody that went to one got on Facebook and said where they went, what they took out, was it good, was it not? You know, it was just fun to see that. Restaurants, you know, created patios. They brought in heaters. It was it was fun to go out and try to, you know, navigate some of that. Our city did an excellent job with that. We were able to go to the farmer's market in a limited capacity, you know. We stuck together as a community. And that is why, you know, I want to be and continue my growth in this community. Thanks, Nancy.
Thanks, Dan. Heather, what do you believe is going well in Janesville?
Well, let me first give a shout out to our teachers because our teachers are rock stars. Let's face it, you know, that was not easy. It's still not easy. Our teachers have pulled a whole lot of weight through this pandemic. They're educating our kids for the most part in person. The struggles, I can't even imagine. But they are rock stars. Our housing, we we have a housing deficit and we are starting to meet those needs. I I'm encouraged by that. I like the fact that we have addressed a problem and we're trying to solve it. We're helping each other. We we have stopped, we have stopped becoming the the selfish individuals that we sometimes can become in in life. And we're helping each other. We're helping our neighbors. We're we're patronizing our businesses. And I love to see that. We're encouraging local shopping. That's fantastic. And and I hope it continues beyond COVID and then some. Quite honestly, I think we're staying very cohesive. And it's a great, it's a great feeling. It really is.
Thank you, Heather. Dave, tell us what you think is going well.
I agree with Dan. This is such a nice question. It's it's so good to talk about good things because sometimes you get mired in all the all the negativity. Yeah, the the way this this community banded together through COVID really tells the story of Janesville. And 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 you can really track it back for years, right? And I don't remember now how long ago GM closed. Boy, people thought that tumbleweeds are going to be going down Main Street and Janesville was over. Guess what? We're back and better than ever, right? Resilience, this this community is resilient. Some other things that I think are going very well, we talked about a little bit earlier. Our economic development team at the city, they do a great job. We've had how many new businesses and that have come to town, big and small, all different sizes. All my downtown folks will be mad if I don't talk about the success of downtown. It's been a passion of mine for a long time. I've been involved in it for 15 years. And wow, is that exciting what we've seen. Multi-million dollar developments that the Monterey Hotel is getting done. Town Square is wonderful. You know, that is one thing we can do with our kids. We can take them down to the bubbler. You can take them over to the music at the Marv. So we're starting to get some of those things that we can take our youth to and enjoy. So there's a lot going on good in this city. And that's why I'm excited to have this opportunity to hopefully be on city council so I can keep that momentum going. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Doug, your turn.
Oh, God, there's so many things to do in a minute and a half. We recognize we had a problem with housing about four years ago. We had a panel got together and focused on it. We worked as a city council and came up with solutions. And we've had some major projects unfinished, almost finished and on board. Our housing starts for single-family houses that are affordable are at an all-time high. Our economic development team is bringing new businesses to town. We're very attractive. We're offering competitive packages to attract them. Our downtown, it was a dying downtown 10 years ago. Look at it now. It's just ready to blossom. Our bond rating, we have a very enviable bond rating. It's because we've got good financial minds working at City Hall that are keeping us our money working the way it should. Our crime is at a 35-year low. Our fire, our fire department was at the forefront of COVID, offering relief and giving services to that. As everybody has said, we are such a giving compassionate community. Food drives were very successful. People were reaching out, making sure their neighbors were okay over the last few things. When there's a a drive for charity, it meets its goals. If there's a drive for a fundraiser for a project, it meets its goals. We've got great education and you just can't say enough about Janesville in a minute and a half. Thank you.
It's more than they give at the end of Around the Corner, though. If anybody has seen that. Okay, Michael, what do you think is going well?
December 23rd, 2008, Robert Wagner announced that GM was closing in Janesville. It was a dark day. I remember someone, I think it was on Sound Off, wrote, "The last person leaving Janesville, please turn out the lights." Shortly thereafter, the newly elected president, Mr. Obama, sent a team in to Janesville, a team of experts to assess the situation. They met with community leaders, myself being one. And the thought was it's going to take 10 years for Janesville to pull itself out of this rut and to become a viable, vibrant city again. We did that in less than five years. Today, we're back and roaring. And I'm proud of our city. I'm proud of downtown. I I I think that's beautiful, particularly the town square. I'm proud of the growth. Our city is growing by leaps and bounds. It's reflected in the cost of our homes. And as a homeowner, I'm happy about that. I love that our crime rate, as Doug wisely noted, is at a 35-year low. I'm proud of Health Net. I'm on their board of directors and they care for the poor in their most vulnerable and needing moments. And I'm proud of the candidates of this debate. We have decided to run a clean campaign. No one said it. No one came together and made a plan. But every one of these six people are running for something and not against, and I'm proud of them.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you to all of you. It was wonderful listening to all the positive things going on. Our next question. And Dan, it's back around to you now to go first. What will you do to ensure the city council adequately represents the interests of all neighborhoods of the city of Janesville? What role can the council play to improve access to supermarkets, broadband internet, and other needed services for all residents?
Okay, so the role the city council can play is getting into all the neighborhoods is really to to listen to what the needs of the neighborhoods are. You know, just being part of this candidacy and running for this. You know, opening up a Facebook page has allowed me to have conversations that I wouldn't have had outside of just my day-to-day life. I live in the downtown district, so I'm kind of right plopped in the mid middle of town. I've lived on the east side. I've lived on the south side. I've lived out in the country. So I'm kind of familiar with, you know, although I although not quite as familiar as Doug is with the city, I have a pretty good grasp of of where where everything is at in town. I I really think what we need to do on council is 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 listen to what the needs are. You know, if the south side needs stop signs, we need to bring that to, you know, a vote, something that we listen to. We just had a, you know, a month and a half ago, we talked about merging some, you know, our fire department with Milton. That got passed. It's it's stuff like that. And when we listen to it and we and and I and councilmen are able to come to a vote. If if we do what I'm talking about, if we do the listening, we're going to be able to ensure the trust of the individuals that when it comes to a vote, it isn't just a knee-jerk reaction, it's a well-thought-out plan, and we put that plan into action.
Thank you, Dan. Heather.
That is a whole lot of information to try to get out in two minutes.
I know it is.
I think we need to remember that we have a lot of residents in our community that are not digitally advanced. We have a whole lot of community people that don't rely on social media, that don't that that don't have the the media at their fingertips like a lot of us do. And keeping those community-based forums, keeping them up on on what is happening in our community and and getting their input is very important. A lot of, a lot of folks fall into those categories that that just need somebody to to lay it out for them. I don't think it's our place as a city to ensure that we have Wi-Fi for everybody. I really don't. We have it offered in in a number of public buildings. We have it offered in in a lot of commercial spaces. We we offer it publicly at the library. And quite honestly, we have it available in our schools where it matters. I think we have options and as an adult, we have to take it upon ourselves to become connected. That's the way our our world is going. Kids are connected. They're connected through the schools. Adults can get connected. It might just take a little bit of effort. Put in the effort.
Thank you, Heather. Dave.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, obviously, the the key is to listen. And and to listen to to people from all different sides of the city and different areas. You know, I live on the northeast side, but I've got a passion for downtown and I work for a bank that's got a an office down on the south side. So so I've got an invested interest in a lot of areas of this city. But listening to them and and figuring out what those needs are for the difference, because they're different, right? The needs of the northeast side are different than the needs of the south side, but they're all just as important. Access to Wi-Fi, should the city provide Wi-Fi? No. But can the city try and help find a way to make it easily accessible? Maybe. You know, I I think this pandemic really shone a light on that. As as kids had to go home and and learn from school and people had to work from home. You know, we, a lot of us maybe take that for granted. It's like, oh, no problem. I'll go in and I'll hook up to my Wi-Fi. A lot of people didn't have that ability. So it's it's really important in today's world that that we find a way to try and help support that. But really, it's listening and and making sure that that all areas of the the community, because everybody has different needs. We've got to address them all and we've got to listen to what those needs are.
Thank you, Dave. Doug.
Yes. The nice thing about having seven council members is that you have seven people working for you, no matter where you live in the city of Janesville. We're not territorial. We don't have our little feetdoms. We work for the entire city. When people call and ask me for help on something, I don't even think to ask them, where do you live? I just help them out, solve the problem. Eventually, I will probably find out so I can come by and and pay a visit and meet them in person. Internet access, the city has kind of a baby steps into some low-power broadband for the downtown Arise area. It goes into the nice-to-have category when we're balancing our wants and needs. It's a nice-to-have. What we really need is private enterprise. And I do believe that if a private enterprise was to come to Janesville and try to figure out how to make it work, the city council and city administration would welcome them with open arms. We do have JATV, a little shout out to them. It's not the internet, but you can learn a lot of things on that. Senior Center and the library are also great places. And I know people take advantage of those computers because sometimes you have to wait. Shopping center on the south side. Economic development is actively working to find somebody. But you have to recognize that the private sector will fill a need when they can find that it's financially viable for them to do it. A city can't force somebody to start a business. We can sure set up the the ground rules to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Michael, how do you think you can ensure that the council represents all neighborhoods?
My first day walking the streets of Janesville as a candidate took me to the far west side. I've walked miles. I walked that area of town, passing out flyers, placing signs, whatever. I went then to Courthouse Square and I walked that area. Last Saturday, I went to the Fourth Ward and walked the Fourth Ward. I was thrilled that several people invited me into their homes along with my wife who was with me. And we learned about some of the needs of people who felt they were underrepresented. And they had a need. They wanted to be heard and we listened. I think that's the key. The word listen is resonating. I have taught on listening. I I've written on listening. It's one of my pet topics. And if I were to be on the council, I would listen, but I would continue to do what I'm doing right now. I would continue to reach out to the people of this city, go where they are, not expect them to come to me. But I would go to where they are, hear what their needs are, listen to their hearts, not just their words, and then I would act. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And Jack, how do you think you can make sure that everyone is represented?
Well, first of all, people need to be heard. We need to listen to their needs in different neighborhoods. As Doug said, it doesn't matter what part of the city they're from. We should all help them equally and listen to their needs. Help them move forward and help them understand what what they can do to help themselves also. We need to keep information fresh and abundant to people so it's easy for them to find anything that's happening with our city, any decisions being made by council or any other city departments, things that are going to happen, things that are necessary repairs, road repairs and whatsoever. As far as the Wi-Fi, there is Wi-Fi available at the library and and several other public places and the schools. I don't believe that the the Janesville should supply Wi-Fi for everyone in the city. If there's places that people can go where when they need it, if it's necessary and they don't have it in their home, there are plenty of places where they can go and they can use that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, this will be our last question before we go into your closing statements. And Heather, you will be going first. What would your priorities be for utilizing COVID relief funding the city may receive?
COVID relief funding, I would love to see those employees who were forced into quarantine, forced into using all of their benefit time. I would like to see them reimbursed. I know that's a a big, a big pill to swallow. How we would go about it would be complex. There's no doubt about it. How we would go about it would be complex, there's no doubt about that. We've been under so many constraints that we we had no idea what we were getting into a year ago. We had no idea what it would look like as we went forward through 2020. And I just think that that we've kind of gotten, employees have gotten the short end of the stick because multiple times you were forced to remain out of work by no fault of their own. So I think that would be a priority in terms of funding. I would like to see that.
Thank you. Dave, if the city gets any COVID funding, what would be your priority?
Sure, so, you know, the first thing we have to do is 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 check out the rules that come with it. But but obviously, it's it's something that we need to figure out quickly because the need is out there. You know, you can't take forever to figure out the perfect plan. You've got to be able to react and 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 get those dollars to work. I think it's, you know, businesses are the ones that have been hurt, employees as well. But I think getting our businesses back on their feet will help lift the whole city, right? So how we how we do that, I don't know. Again, there's probably going to be some specific things that you have to follow, stay inside some guardrails, but really helping our business community, the the restaurants, the hospitality, the ones that were really hurt badly. And and I think doing that will help lift up the whole community. If there's a way to help some individuals as well, that's great. You know, there's there's rent assistance, people that are are maybe close to being evicted, you know, those types of things. So you've got to really look at the needs and try and have it be really targeted so that it hits where the needs are the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Doug, what would be your priorities for any COVID funding we might receive?
Since it was just announced in the news the other day, I would agree with Dave. We need to see what strings are attached to this. It might be outside of our hands to do this. I'm I'm thinking they'll probably structure it something like they did when we had the floods in Janesville, when we had a lot of flooding and FEMA had a relief program where you can apply and you can prove your losses. I would love to be able to reimburse our small businesses, our restaurants, hospitality, our event caterers, our nonprofits, and and I'm hoping that this will work down, work its way into the workers to keep them whole and bring them back to work. The Ice Arena would not be at the top of my list, if it's even on my list of what we can do with this COVID relief funding. Well, it just needs to be equitable, fair, and and follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Michael, your priorities?
Today's newspaper, Sports Complex Backers Look to Federal Funds. And a portion of the article says, "Estimates from the National Association of Counties show Rock County should, could receive thirty one thou- thirty one million, thirty one point seven million from state and local controversy fiscal recovery funds as a part of the Federal American Rescue Act." Like Doug said, we would not want to put that into a sports complex, we would want to put that into people, the small businesses, individuals, people that have lost their jobs, we need to help that. I would be prioritizing testing, vaccination, treatment, education, and support. I would use the city's power and so and resources as needed, I would be a facilitator. I would encourage people to get the vaccination. I would not force them, you can't force people to put something into their body against their wishes, but I would certainly make that as an encouragement. I've received both vaccinations myself. I would focus on our heroes, I'd have a first responders' day if I were on the city council, I'd make a resolution to that effect, I'd name a bridge, I'd make, name a fa- a fountain, I'd name a baby. I don't know what I'd do, but I'd name something after our first responders, they are true heroes, and I would want to make them feel that we, as a city, really value and appreciate what they've done.
Thank you, Michael. Jack, if we get any funding, what would you do with it? What would be your priorities?
As Dave and Doug said, find out what the rules are and the guidelines that we would need to follow in order to not be penalized or or anything go awry with that. I would invest it back into our smaller businesses, our Janesville owned businesses that employ our Janesville citizens to get people back to work, get them back on track, help people get back to what can be as normal as possible, and give people their lives back so we can reestablish our city and get things back on track. I think we need to stay focused on Janesville owned businesses, not national corporations, but focus on the people in the city of Janesville, the, like I say, the the Janesville owned businesses and the people who live here and work here. That's where I believe that the the funding should go. And I believe, as Michael said, educating people and helping them get through this, get their vaccinations, and whatever they need to get past this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And Dan?
Yeah, so as, if you're likely to the council, you're one of seven leaders of the city, the first and the most important thing we need to do is dive into that budget and really understand it and where we, the funds can be allocated. If the funds are not specifically earmarked, I would encourage looking for pain points that we've already prioritized. This is no different than when I write my budget for the company that I work for. We need to have our list of priorities and go down that list of priorities and start checking the boxes. You know, if we've done our research, we know what those are. They are the businesses, they are the utility tax. You know, one thing that comes to my mind, being a father of two small children, are out of the box activities for our children's youth. There certainly will be funds for that, and how we allocate those funds will be very important to help, you know, further along the the before and after school programs. Those programs, you know, are out there for our children, they are federally funded. You know, some of them are funded through, you know, places in our city. It it will be imperative for us to educate ourselves to the nth degree on what that looks like and and come together, collaborate on that council, and really come to a conclusion of what our top priorities are and utilize those funds in a way that is not wasteful and that makes an impact on our city in the most important way. And it will be by those priorities.
Thank you, Dan. All right, we have now come to the conclusion of the question part, and now you will each receive up to two minutes to give your, give us a chance to hear more about you, and this is your chance to say anything you wish you would have said earlier and to sell yourselves to the voters. So Dave, you will be the one to go first.
Great. Again, thank you, Legal Women Voters, Diversity Action Team, Forward Janesville, J A T V, Nancy, Linda, and all the candidates. This has been great. I think we all did pretty good with the technology, it certainly isn't the normal forums, and we've been through two of them, and I think we've done pretty darn good. So congratulations to everybody. I'm not a lifelong Janesville resident, but I've been here twenty five, twenty six years, I don't know, I raised my kids here. They went through the school system, my my son Ryan still works here, my my daughter's up in DePierre, Ally raising raising her daughter. But this city gave a lot to our family, it it really did, and and so I want to give back a little bit, and I've done that over the years. The last fifteen years, I've I've really focused myself on on downtown and very proud of what what we've accomplished down there. The downtown revitalization is phenomenal, and I'm so excited about that. What I want people to understand about me i- i- is if I'm elected to the city council, what people will find is, anything that becomes in front of me, I'm going to give it its due time. I'm going to research it, I'm going to listen to both sides, and I'm really going to take the time to understand everything that comes in front of me before I make a decision, and I'm going to look for a balanced decision. I can't promise everybody I'll make the decision that they that they agree with, but I can promise everyone that it will be a well thought out and balanced decision. Just a real quick story, you know, I I was on the group that started the downtown bid, and after a failed event in two thousand eight, we we tried it again. And the first thing we did is we reached out to those people that opposed it the first time and brought them in on our task force and and said, okay, let's find a middle ground, let's find a balance that we can make this work, and we did that. So that's what's critical, is listening to both sides, getting everybody in the room, whether they agree with you or disagree with you, and find that balanced solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Doug?
Yes, I would like to thank the Legal Women Voters, Nancy, Linda, Al, for and everyone else at J A T V who put this together. Eight years ago, I threw my hat and just like these other five upstanding citizens, pledging to serve the citizens of the Janesville, Wisconsin to the best of my ability. I hope you believe I have done that for the last eight years, and I'm here to tell you, I was told of many people before, this will be my last term. I pledge to give ten years back to the city in return for all the good things that have happened to me and my family over the last fifty, sixty years. I pledge to serve the citizens as their representative in a nonpartisan, using common sense approach, listening to the residents, the businesses. I promise to work hard and be fiscally conservative. I promise to respect the past, our history, but live for today and have a vision for the future. This is my last term, and so being that, what I would like to do if elected is the three new council members, I would love to be able to mentor them through this first year to make sure that they succeed, because if they succeed, the city succeeds. That first year is very difficult, but we can, we can do it. But we said earlier, a bridge to City Hall, I, we help people on a daily basis, you don't hear about it in the newspaper, it doesn't make the news, but a lot of people get answers, they get things explained to them in a way that they can understand. We find solutions if there are solutions, or we explain to them why it is the way it is and try to make it work. I will always, and I have in the past, you can look at my record, I will explain my vote. You're not just going to get a vote with no response. It'll be a well researched decision, and it's based on listening to you. And the last thing I want to say is my best asset is my harshest critic, my wife who's stuck with me for the last ten years of doing, or eight years of doing this, and she's a child of the Fourth Ward, and she grounds me immensely. Thank you, Jean. Bye.
Thank you, Doug. Michael?
I too offer my thanks to the League of Women Voters, the J A T V, Forward Janesville, the Diversity Action Team of Rock County for sponsoring this forum. You are to be commended for a job well done. Also, thank Nancy and Linda. I want to also thank my competitors, and I appreciate, again, the wisdom and the tenor with which they approached, the hard work with which they approached this event. Let me say something on a very personal note, I I I struggle with whether I should say it or not. Sometimes we wonder about homelessness, we wonder about diversity, we wonder about these issues we've talked about earlier. Let me just tell you this, when I was raised, there were periods of time when I was homeless, was in a family of seven, I know what it's like to sleep in a car, I know what it's like to sleep on a park bench, I know what it's like to crash on a floor for weeks on end because we didn't have a home, I know what it's like to go hungry. When I talk about loving people, when I talk about Health Net, or I talk about Freedom Fest, or I talk about the food pantry we started here in town, those are born out of passion. And it is that passion that has caused me to love this city, to be involved in it. As I said in our last debate, there's not a moment, not a, you can't find one minute on a twenty four hour clock that I haven't been at the bedside of someone in Janesville who was dying, who was sick, who needed a friend, and I was there for them. And let me tell you, if you're black, if you're white, if you're poor or if you're rich, if you're educated or uneducated, if you're liberal or you're conservative, if you're a Democrat, or if you're a conserv- a Republican, if you're on the east side or the north side, west side or the south side, I would be there to hear you and to serve you. Why I care, community matters.
Thank you. Jack, your turn.
Well, I, first of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, J A T V, everyone who put this on tonight, and the five other candidates. I am so humbled to be here in your presence because the answers tonight were absolutely stunning and amazing. Everybody had great answers for all of the questions, and I appreciate learning from all of you. And I I intend to keep learning and keep moving forward to try to help the people of Janesville. And as I said before, I want to listen, I want to address problems, issues, any, anything that I can do to help people along and and help them get through whatever their problems may be, so they're not looking down on the employees or or city employees of Janesville or the police department or fire department or whatever, because they don't feel that they're being listened to. I believe any of these candidates would listen closely and address the issues, and I really appreciate that. And as Michael said, he he had been homeless, I had been homeless before, I'm the last child of sixteen in my family. We've had to go without food. I know what hunger pains are, and I said, when I grow up, I'm never going to live like that again, I swear, and that's why I'm such a hard worker. I have an amazing work ethic, and I will work hard for this campaign to make things better for our citizens. Thank you all so much, and again, I'm very humbled to be here with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Dan, your turn.
Yeah, I think this is just timely. On the back end of Women in Construction Week, we have the League of Women Voters. So I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this at a very awesome time. Thank you, J A T V, you guys always do an awesome job. Forward Janesville. And it's just a special thanks to Nancy and Linda for for hosting this, this forum. You know, I want to leave the town better than I started with the town. For me, being a role model to my children and and seeing their father go through this process, they're in it every day with me, it's just encouraging to hear their little voices, you know, they they get a chance to walk around and and kind of get up to speed on all of this stuff, it's it's just really cool. Like I said earlier, I love the businesses, being a part of Forward Janesville has opened my eyes to just how wonderful that this community is on on all levels. I mentioned the one owner shops, to, you know, to the Walmart Targets of our town. You know, everybody's been in it together, you know, I I want to be on this council, I want to be on this council to be that liaison between them, the individuals, to work, you know, be their servant leader and work hard for them in a collaborative, educated, you know, Janesville first mentality. That's truly what I'm about, that's what I want to do. I'm younger, I have the passion to, and the drive to do this, I have the time to do this, I fully understand the time commitment that it takes to be on city council and what that truly means to our community and have the seven leaders that that are making very, very large decisions. Like I said, I I work within a very large budget, I understand what that looks like. You know, if if voted to council, I will come, researched, educated, and ready to make the decisions that are going to best forward our community. Again, thank you guys for hosting, I really, really do appreciate it. Thank you to all the other members that have been able to join into this debate.
Thank you, Dan. And Heather?
Well, thank you. I want to echo the appreciation for hosting this forum. I know it's never easy, the steps we've had to take over the last year have not been easy. This is, this is amazing to be able to come together and still offer up ideas and present ourselves really to to the public so that you can make an educated decision, that's what it's all about. I'm not afraid to ask the hard questions. When it comes down to it, I'm not going to be everybody's friend, but I am a good communicator, I will listen, and I make sure that you understand, I make sure that people understand why things are done and how they need to be done. I'm not always going to be somebody's friend, but I make things work, and and I'm very creative in that way. I think I offer a fresh perspective. I have kids that are grown, I have, I have raised my kids in this, in this community, and now my grandkids are being raised in this community. I also have children who are elementary school age, so I, it's like being grounded for forty years. So I have a very wide perspective. I love that we're making strides, and I also want to be a part of the growth and moving forward as as we've seen so many amazing things that this city has to offer. I would love to be a part of that, and I would love to keep connected to the people who sometimes feel disconnected.
Thank you, Heather. Well, that concludes our forum for this evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and our other sponsors, I want to thank all of you for your commitment and your willingness you for your commitment and your willingness to serve and wish you well in your future, whether you are on council or not. And a reminder to all of those watching that the election will be on Tuesday, April sixth, and there is in-person or in-person absentee voting up until April second, starting on March twenty-third. So thank you and have a wonderful evening.